I guess we are.
The webinar is open.
Okay, great. I'd like to call the regular meeting in regular session of the zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jerry Mulligan. I'm chairing the meeting. With me are five other members of the board. Lynn Icault, Matthew Cole, Bruce Tob, Austin Higgins, and Martin Zaber. We have, Sebel is not here, regular member. So I'm going to last time, I think, Martin, you voted on two cases and so I'm going to reverse that. So tonight, Austin, if you would be the voter on the first and third cases. And Martin, if you would be the voter on the second matter, that would be good.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to actually recuse on 2202, the second case. So I think you'll need both alternates.
All right, very good. Then, all right, Austin, you're voting on all three and Martin, you're voting on the second one. Oh, actually, yeah, that's right. Okay. All right, the first item of business to review the minutes of March 15, April 5, and May 3. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go on favor.
Aye.
All right, the next item of business is to review the decisions for case number 2197, blue. Case 2199, Athanas CEO. And case number 2200, even Keel. Are there any questions or comments on the, those decisions? Okay, hearing none, those are just on there for review. We don't vote on those. All right, now, first item of new business. Case number 2201, Seaside Court Condominiums LLC. Is Mr. Zender in the audience?
Often times, on this screen, all the participants, oh, there's Ben. Are the other participants?
He's in, he's here.
Let me, let me ask you, let me ask, let me ask you a question here. It's a lot of order here, Matt. How do you, how do you get to see the whole, who's out there in the, in the, in the audience, Matt? Is there a setting on Zoom?
In, in the screen, there's something called, you see mute and start video, and then you see participants. And there's a number of participants, and at the moment, it says 26. And if you click on that in the sidebar, you see all of their names or phone numbers.
Oh, all right, great. Well, that's, you learn something every day. Thank you, Mr. Tob. I never knew you were a technocrat.
Well, when it comes to communicating lawyers, a very dependent, the written word.
That's, that's good to know. Mrs. Zender, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mulligan. How are you tonight?
Fine, thanks. You're making this presentation tonight?
I am. It's nice, it's nice to see you all again tonight. I'm Ben Zender and sitting here, you can see on the screen with me is Marty Riley, who's the owner of the property and the developer of the project.
Welcome, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you can hear us okay? So this is, this is an application under 16431A for, for multiple residence development in the limited business district. And if you don't mind, Mr. Mulligan, I'd like to just turn this over to Marty to give you sort of an overview for the project. And then I will, with the board's permission, address the bylaw, the bylaw provisions.
Very good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning Board of Appeals. And I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. For the record, my name is Marty Riley, and I'm the developer of the project at 57 Locust Road, Orleans, to be known as Seaside Court Condominiums. Located on a 1.34 acre site. Served by public water and public sewer in the limited business district. And it will consist of, as proposed, it would consist of nine freestanding, single-family detached homes. Under the form of condominium ownership. Each with their own exclusive individual lots and right of use areas. We put together a very good team for this project. We've assembled a team of, a great team consisting of our architect, whose name is Andy Zaluski. Who was a national award-winning architect from the MZO Group, who's done a lot of work in Cape Cod. Our local attorney is Ben Zender here in Orleans. Our engineering firm, who is participating by Zulva's Cape and Islands Engineering, led by Raul Rivera. And he's done a lot of these types of projects on the Cape. And our general contractor is Matt Casey of Champion Homes, who has also done numerous projects like this. Both on the Cape and off the Cape. We've been working very closely on this project with the town for approximately the last 10 months. And prior to night, through meetings with George Merserby and various boards, we've received approval from the Site Plan Review Committee. From the Architectural Review Committee. From the Water and Sewer Commission to allow us to have an increased allocation of sewer usage. To accommodate the three bedrooms in each of the nine homes for a total of 27 bedrooms. And also, we've met and received approvals from the Board of Health. Our interest in doing this project was precipitated, interestingly enough, by an article that appeared in the Cape Cod Times. I'm going to just hold it up for you, just generally. It appeared on Friday, July 15, 222. And George Merserby was quoted in it. And it said the town was looking for a project like this in the Village Center District. You know, that was close to downtown, that could help the businesses and the shops. And it was close to the bike trail and the beaches and the churches, et cetera. So that's why we decided to go forward with this project. And we look forward, as I say, to doing a great legacy project for the town of Orleans and its people and residents and businesses. The project that we have put forth tonight is inspired by another project that I did in the Cape several years ago. And I'm just going to hold it up for your review. It was a compound in Lewis Bay, and the artist Robert Kennedy liked it very much. And he did, actually did a painting of it and added it to his gallery. So I hope that we can do something similar to that with this nice project that we do here in the town of Orleans. Seaside Court Project, condominium project, as shown in the plan before you. Consists of, as I say, nine freestanding, single-family detached homes on individual lots. The individual lots range in size from 4,160 square feet to 5,726 square feet. And they will be owned under the form of condominium ownership, as they say, served by public water and public sewer and all the other utilities that are at the site. Gas and electric. The house plans are going to be 34 feet wide in the front and 24 feet long on the side. With an attached one car garage that is 12 feet wide and 26 feet long. The main house consists of three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Which is about 1645 square feet. And we're going to be offering an opportunity for people to have a study or home office above the garage if they are desirous of that. Which would bring the total house size to 1,900 square feet. Each house is going to have also an outdoor rinse station in the rear of the house. And a separate area in the rear of the house to provide private trash receptacles to pick up. There's parking in each driveway. Garage is parking for at least, at least two cars per house. And there's an area in the front of each of the houses in the roadway for service vehicles for landscaping and trash pickup and snow plowing, et cetera. There'll be separate post lighting in front of each house. And there'll be a small fence at the entrance to the property on either side of the main entrance, a low-level fence that preserves line of sight. And there'll be a light on each side of that as you enter the project. The property, as Attorney Zender was going to talk about, is Zone Limited Business District, which allows for this use. And we, we thank you for your consideration of the project tonight, and we hope for approval of this project. And we look forward to making this something very special for the town. So thank you. And I'd like to turn it to Ben now to talk about the specific requests. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Okay, so procedurally, procedurally, we've already received approval by the Site Plan Review Committee. It was a fairly comprehensive review, mostly because of line of sight and grading issues. And making sure that the entrances to the property were safe and adequate for fire.
Questions, other members of the board have questions.
Is there any relationship between this and the thirty? I'm losing the letter that had to do with low income housing.
Forty B.
Forty B, and if not, why not?
Uh, Mr. Tao, for Mr. Mulligan, uh, this is not a forty B project.
On this.
It's not intended to be, this is, this is what we would call generally affordable housing as opposed to uh, either subsidized or, or below market rate affordable housing, so it, 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 it hits a different need in the community than than the forty B, you know, as we understand it, the town is involved right now in, in several projects, you know, and facilitating several projects, including the Cape Cod five building, including possibly the, uh, the Governor Prince Motel that will address uh, capital A affordability, but these are not, these are not that.
And when you say moderate, just for my own edification, what's the anticipation roughly of the sale price?
Well, I, I, I never use the word moderate, Mr. Tao, um, I don't believe anybody's a moderate, but, um, but I, um, I think, you know, the sale price probably be in the eight hundred, eight hundred range for the, for the single family residences. So, um, I hate to, I hate to say that that's an affordable range for housing, but it's, you know, given the cost of construction and the cost of development, everything else, that, that seems to be where these types of units, you know, m- makes sense from a development standpoint.
And, and as.
Regardless. Um, there was recent discussion at the town meeting about, um, residency requirements that I don't think was fully resolved. But if an owner of this condominium wanted to rent it out, uh, would they have any, uh, problems with that, either with the rental association or anything else in Orleans that you're aware of?
Uh, from a, from a, hold on one second, wait, from a, from a, from a municipal standpoint, there's no limitation on the use of these units. Um, I don't know whether Orleans has gone to a, a, a rental, you know, a rental bylaws on a valley, and I haven't been paying attention as to whether or not they're limiting the ability to rent single family homes. That was certainly affected, um, and I haven't discussed with Marty whether there will be any limitations in the condominium documents about renting units and.
Um, we, we envision these homes being, uh, you know, year-round homes for people that would live them in them on a, a year-round basis, and it could be some second homes for people. But I, I would envision very limited rental of that to other parties. Also, as, um, Ben said, um, this property is zoned limited business district. So by, by the zoning, it allows you to do all market rate housing, and I, and I think it would be a nice project to complement the efforts to revitalize the downtown with its proximity to the shops and the restaurants and just the businesses, and as well as the proximity to the bike path and the church and, and beaches. So hopefully it will be a positive one that will generate some good tax revenue. There's a lot of, it appears to be a lot of interest in it at this point. Well, thank you.
Other, other questions?
Chairman, I noticed, I, I noticed Matt Cole's hand up, but I also noticed somebody else in the audience who I didn't recognize.
We, we, Bruce, we're gonna hang, but we have the members of the board ask questions first, and we open up for general, uh, general questions. So we're, we're now at the portion of the meeting where we, members of the board have to have the ability to ask questions. Matt?
So two, two questions and a comment, um, fir- first is how, how you address parking other than, um, the single car garage, or are you providing essentially one spot per unit?
There is, um, looking at the plan, there's room for, I believe, two cars in, in the parking area in front of each house. Uh, there's also a single garage space, and then, um, in the common areas on the site plan, there's a, a set aside coming back from the paved width that permits um, to pull up on the side of the road in the front of the house. It's anticipated that would be either overflow or people coming to service the homes would be able to park along the side of the roadway. There's a, there's a sort of a, a, a no improvement zone on either side of the uh, of the paved driveway coming in, and the total width of that is, I'm trying to read, I think it's twenty-eight, it's a twenty-eight foot strip, which is called a common use strip. Um, and I can share my screen if that's helpful, but the colored site plan shows that dotted line with that common use area where people can pull their vehicles from the side and, and believe it travel way in the middle.
What, what plan shows that? I was, I, I didn't see the parking that you just referenced, so that answers my question.
Is it, is it possible for me to share my screen?
I mean, I've got the plans up on my screen if you want.
Would be, um, the plan would be, I'm just looking at this plan, it's, um, it's, it's, it's the Cape and Islands Engineering Plan, trying to see if I can see a title on it, um. It's the layout plan, called the layout plan, it's got the driveway cross-section, and it's a colored plan, um, showing the nine units, showing the way, and then showing the common use strip on either side of the way.
Okay.
It's paid forty-one of sixty-one in the, in the PDF packet.
Got it, thank you for that. Um, you mentioned that you could do up to eleven units proposed in front of us as nine units, so is, is the calculation on that, is that the eight, eight units per acre allowable?
That's the way it works, it's based on the per unit, it's based on the, the, uh, the eight, eight per acre, and this lot is sixty thousand eight hundred and ten square feet.
A- and then the last comment really goes back to the prior questions, and it's just a comment, my own opinion. I, I really, really, really hope that you consider adding to your, to your bylaw, your condo bylaw to not allow a weekly rental, so that these are in fact year-round homes, as you indicated. Um, that, that's what the town desperately needs, and to see nine units on this lot is, is fantastic, so, um, I, I really, uh, pleased to see this and appreciate the, um, construction of much, much, much needed housing in this town.
Thank you.
Uh, Lynn, please.
Um, my, my question has to do with, with affordability. Um, I could be really out of date, but eight hundred thousand doesn't seem like a price that a teacher or, um, a fireman or could afford particularly. Um, and these are pretty sizable, and so this might be a question that's more to the planning board than, than to you as a developer, but is it possible to build twelve or thirteen hundred square foot units with a couple of bedrooms? That would be much more affordable for what we consider, you know, people who are living and working in this town, not people who come from away and come for the weekends, um, to a condo. And could, could this property hold more than nine if we looked at something like that?
I'll, I'll address that, uh, the answer, Lynn, is yes, the property could support a higher density of housing, but that's not this bylaw, you know, the, the town people went to the, went to the town meeting and adopted this particular bylaw for the express purpose of, of creating non big A affordable housing, and it has certain density requirements of, of a.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about forty, like, yeah, I'm, I just wanna make it clear, I'm not talking about housing that is subsidized.
It's a different, it's, it's a different project, it's, first of all, this ballot doesn't permit that, you know, that would have to go under a forty B project to get above the eight units per acre. Um, so it would be a different project, it would have a different feel for the neighborhood, it would be a different, um, it would be a different demographic coming in, it would, it would be a very different project for Marty to try to build, and um, and forty B projects are difficult, they're, they're just difficult, so.
No, I know they are, but I'm not talking about forty B. Um, I'm, I'm talking about housing that's not subsidized, but is not eight hundred thousand dollars and is not necessarily sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred square feet.
You can't, but look, on this lot, you can't go over eleven units, um, you, you can't go over eleven units, and, and, and you know, some of the members know much more about this than I do, but you have to be able to afford to build them, and you have to be able to afford to sell them, and so, um, you know, you saw the project on Cove Road, you know, um, you know, again, you know, my experience in dealing with the, the people that are both developing these is that the margins aren't that big on these, and so, you know, to, to do those types of projects that, that would hit a different group of people are, are very different to build and very difficult to build, so this is not that project, this is, this is adding nine, what I would call, you know, I hate to use the word moderate, but there's certainly not.
It's not moderate, eight hundred thousand's not moderate, it's not affordable for a teacher and a school.
The town isn't affordable, I mean, just not, and so, look, this project is, is, is nine units, it, it's coming in at this price point, it, it adds nine units, which is nine units.
I agree, I do agree with Matt, but it's better than doing one single five thousand square foot house, absolutely, so, but it's not, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, it doesn't solve our housing problem of people who work at Friends or teachers who teach in the school, it doesn't solve that problem, eight hundred, and, and I'm, I guess I'm just asking, I'm, I'm pressing since you, you know, as you're representing a developer here, is there a way to do that kind of project, not forty B? I mean, I'm talking, you know, regular development, but it's gotta be more like twelve hundred or fourteen hundred square feet per unit, not sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred. And is there a way to do that kind of thing, and it's just a question, and that's why I know it's, it's not relevant to this, well, it is, because I am also asking if you could, if the bylaw was, was different, you could actually fit more smaller units, not affordable housing on this property.
Yeah, well, first of all, look, there, there were, there were different bylaws for different purposes. This ballot is not designed to create affordable housing, i- i- that's such that you're talking about, Lynn, it's, it's not designed for that, and look, there are processes for creating the types of housing, and, and the towns looking at that with the Cape Cod five building and, and, and other properties, and there are builders that come in and, and do that at that density. Um, you know, different projects meet different needs in the town, and so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to look at a project under this bylaw through an affordability lens, it really is, it's not, it's not fair to the applicant to do that. Uh, Marty, I think Marty has a couple of comments.
Just to say a couple of things, um, one is, as Ben says, I know there's a number of projects that are being talked about in the town for forty B related housing, but also when you pay, you know, we paid about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand or something like that for this property, very expensive. And also, when you have to put the water and sewer and all the utilities in, and then the excessive cost today of building the houses, trying to build a quality project for the town for posterity, you know, these homes are all gonna have hardwood floors, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, crown molding, you know.
Yeah, they're gonna be high-end, right?
No, they're, they're gonna be very nice, but some people have said, Marty, I think you could get a lot more for these houses, I'm not seeking to do that. But the other thing I wanted to say is that the way these plans are laid out, it's kind of interesting. It does give some flexibility to a buyer, because the first floor plan of these houses is an open floor concept on one side with a great room, which is comprised of a kitchen, a dining area, a living area with a fireplace and built-in, um, bookcases to a slider to a deck or a patio. But then the other half has a half bath with a washer and dryer, and then there's a master bedroom on the first floor. So it's quite possible that some buyers might choose to say, geez, could we buy it and, uh, finish the second floor later? And, you know, we're open to some of those things, or, you know, the option of the study home office is another thing, so there's a little bit of flexibility been built into those houses uh, to accommodate a prospective buyer, so hopefully that will help some people too, you know? But as Ben said, this property is zoned for this purpose, and it's very expensive, that's the only way the economics can work, you know, so. Thank you.
Thank you, other, other members of the board have questions? All right, let, let me just, before I open up to the general public, I just want to, um, uh, affirm with, um, Matt, the issue of, um, a rental. Yeah, I, I'm familiar, in Florida, they have, um, a, a lot of condominium buildings, and one of the provisions of the bylaws of the condominium are mental, uh, uh, minimum rental periods of three or four months, once a year. And, uh, it would be a, uh, I think one of the growing problems in the town is the short-term rentals, and they become party houses. And I think that the, all the homeowners here, the people who really want to own these things as year-round residents, would appreciate it, but it can be a selling point if you have as part of the, uh, condominium bylaws, some substantial minimum rental period.
I, I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great idea, and I know when we did the project on Lewis Bay, the one that the artist Robert Kennedy did, I think we had a one-month minimum, uh, for rental of a house, so the intent, I'm very, we'd be very happy, Ben, to put something like that. In, in, in the condo docs, because the intent i- is for this is not to be weekly rentals, that's for sure, you know, to be a nice project. You know, the grounds are always gonna be manicured properly with the planting to the grass cut and well-maintained and, 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 you know, uh, I'm, I'm open to that, you know, but, but I think as well, when people are paying a lot of money, you know, you ha- I think you have to give them a little bit of flexibility, but certainly a minimum.
You'd be surprised, Mr. Riley, I rented in Florida every year, and the condominium I rent in the, it's the homeowners who enforce that, uh, minimum rental period, they don't want their, they don't want their condominium becoming a hotel, basically.
That would be that, I could, you know, a thirty-day minimum rental would be, would be a fine condition.
Well, in Florida, i- if minimum, the smallest you ever, the shortest period you ever hear in Florida is three months, and most of them are four months, but, uh, in other words, one season, you're allowed to rent to one person for the, for the Florida season, you know? It might be a good thing to look at here, um, I don't know that we want to get into that, but that's a way the town can sort of address this issue of rental, with having minimum rental periods. And, uh, but I just, I put that out.
Okay.
All right, now it's time to turn to, um, comments from the general public. Are there, are there people out there who, uh, wish to speak in favor or opposition, uh, let's start with those in favor. Anyone out there in the audience looking to speak in favor of this, uh, proposal? I don't know who's, uh, let me do this participant thing, I knew.
I have one hand raised, I've been trying to let her in, but she will not accept, so.
Okay. All right, um, anyone, anyone wish to speak in, in either opposition or just have questions or comments they'd like to make? Can you let them in, please?
Yes. Yes.
All right, who's, who's speaking, I got, uh?
This is Doug and Lori.
Okay, I see you up there, yep, Doug and Lori, please, uh, please, uh, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Doug LeCayre, and I'm here with Lori Vale.
I'm sorry, your, your quality of sound isn't that good, just Doug, what's the last name, please?
LeCayre, fifty-eight Locust Road, across the street.
Very good.
Pose Development.
Well, why don't you give us your comments, please?
Yes, thank you, um, we have a couple, couple questions, couple comments. First of all, um, good presentation, informative, thanks for hearing from us, but, uh, you know, went directly across the street, and we appreciate some contact with the developers, though about ways to shield have you of the, you said to the trees on either side, right? Have you met with those people already? No, didn't meet with us, and we are directly across the street from you. And we'd rather not be looking at the driveway, but, you know, maybe it'll come with time, we're just not there yet. Um, another thing we'd like to bring up is, uh, we looked at the plan, the sixty-one page plan that was submitted online, and there was a couple of questions that would answer kind of quickly to us. We live here year-round, and there's a corner, an elevated corner with a blind driveway, right? That, uh, that, uh, is gonna be a traffic hazard, it's gonna be, it has been, it is now, we got people crashed to our fence, crashed it by that, crashed into our trees.
Come close to the house.
And when you look at the plan, it's, it's being on impact on traffic.
What are the facts to support that statement? There's also, it's very anecdotal in nature, there's no facts for traffic safety noise, impact on the neighborhood, it just states no impact.
So we were kind of curious about.
How is that answered that way? What are the facts?
Mrs. Zander?
Yeah, I mean, look, it's single paper, it's, it's residential use, um, you know, the use will be, the, the noises normally associated with residential uses. Um, a- again, it's, it's zoned for this number of units in this, in this district, and so the zoning code in, in establishing that density in a limited business district, you know, presumes that the noise, the normal noise and the normal traffic and the normal, uh, effects of the use of these residents at this density is a permissible level of those types of activities in this neighborhood. Um, but, you know, I wasn't aware, and, and thank you, um, Doug and Lori, for your, your statements about the accidents. Um, you know, what we do is our engineer, Raul, works with buyer and DPW to make sure that the sightlines are maximized, that the grades are maximized, that the utility connections are maximized, to make it as safe as possible uh, in this neighborhood, and we've done that, and, and that was probably one of the most comprehensive discussions that we had at Site Plan Review with fire and, and DPW to make sure that the grading and, um, that, you know, the fences that are installed in the front permit sightlines, that the vegetation in the front permit sightlines. So, um, there will certainly be some visibility of the project from, uh, from, uh, Locust Road, but these houses are fronting on Seaside Court, so, um, Doug and Lori, and, and I'm sorry, there will be the traffic associated with nine residences coming on and off of Locust Road coming in. So I, I assume, as I always do, that the people coming down the road, the people coming in and out of this will try to maximize their own self-preservation, and will look both ways when they come out and be as safe as they can, um.
The speed of which they come over the blind curve. I had just moved from in front of my fence area where I was tending my landscaping, and a, and a car was pulling out from the road from the house across the street, and they come around, they come down this road very quickly, and, uh, you're talking about one individual living in that home previously, now I've seen the paperwork, it's, you say forty-eight, I'm saying there's three bedrooms, could be two people per bedroom, I don't know where you're parking them, their statement was two car availability. Today, most people each have a car. Um, I'm a little concerned about that aspect as well as the traffic safety. The traffic safety answer was just none, no safety issues, but it all seemed centered around the actual condo or nine homes. Uh, addition, that area, it's the safety of the people in the area that live there in traffic using Locust Road that I'm interested in.
It truly is a blind curve with a bend and a hill, and it's, it's very difficult to see. Now, we live here, so we go slow, it's not us that know that it's gonna be going fast, it's gonna be the people that don't know the area, that come here for the summer. We have them, I mean, they've crashed through the fence, through the house, through the trees, through the wildlife bushes, and that's normal summer traffic. So, that's just one point, another thing I wanted to talk about, that I hadn't heard anybody on the board discuss was, and if you have, I apologize, but, uh, the historical nature of the neighborhood, you have some of the oldest houses in Orleans right here on this road, the oldest house in Orleans is about a quarter of a mile down the road, I mean, are we preserving the nature of this, this, uh, this neighborhood with this development?
Our particular house is seventeen ninety or older. Uh, there's another individual two doors down, they're just as old.
Just as old, I mean, these houses were here before, before the road was here, before Orleans was here.
Before that property was used as Florence Young's house. Um.
It, it seems like this isn't going with the, uh, act to preserve the nature of the neighborhood. And I looked at the plan, and they look like nice houses, they're beautiful houses, and nicer than my house, it's bigger than my house.
Absolutely.
It's bigger than my house, it's not a lot that's bigger than my house. But, you know, that doesn't seem like it's preserving the nature of the neighborhood. And I know the historic district has put out some, uh, historic council, historic, I mean, but I'm not knowing the correct words, but is concerned that they have a, an interest in making Locust Road a historic area.
To preserve the feel and the histor- history of this town. I'm also interested in the explanation on the cumulative impact on condos and developments. We have Oaks of Orleans, now we have these nine very large homes, you call it condo, you call it apartment, very large homes, placed on one point three acres in a residential neighborhood. What's gonna stop the property right across the street on the other side from maximizing the financial benefit there and adding another eight or nine? Is that whole limited bis- district, business district gonna turn into a condo, uh, haven? And given that, you talk about, and Lynn, thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate that, because that's exactly all the housing crisis I've been looking to have satisfied. We've had friends move, teachers, firemen, policemen, home health aides to take care of the geriatric people in this neighborhood, and yes, you're correct, eight hundred thousand dollars is not a viable moderate income home.
Yeah, employing people to buy these houses, because the people who are.
Can't afford them. Is that the housing crisis we're looking to solve?
Well, as, as has been said earlier in the meeting, the, the, uh, goal of the town is to increase housing to reduce the price and supply and demand, the greater the supply, and, and hopefully the, uh, ameliorate the rise in prices.
Do you believe that, really? It sounds good, but.
Yeah, well, I know, and then the town goes and buys up all the free land for preservation, so, yeah, you got it going both ways.
When you can put nine on an acre, what's to stop anybody from doing that?
Well, that's the, that's the zoning bylaw, as, as the town meeting has, has affirmed, I think your, your, many of your remarks that aren't specific to this project are better addressed at town meeting.
Okay.
They go to the future of the nature of the town.
Good, thank you.
Um, but, uh, as to local, as to questions that pertain to this project, um, you know, you've raised the question about traffic coming in and off the street, and you've raised the issue of view from your home. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Riley wants to comment on, uh, possible screening you can give to the, uh, project from the street view.
Mr. Mulligan, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Marty can address that question.
Uh, uh, first of all, I, I, I would, uh, I, I would like to meet with you, uh, Mr. Mr. LeCayre, I would come over and meet with him. Sorry that I haven't had a chance to meet with you before. Um, I did meet the neighbors on either side, and, and I do apologize for that. In reference to the issue of plantings, um, from where your house is, as Ben, as Zander said, we had several discussions with Site Plan Review for safety reasons, and, uh, the most that they would allow us to do there, so that it looks aesthetically ni- nice, is a low, uh, white fence, very similar to the white fence that you have at beautiful town hall. And with also low-level planting, so that we can safely preserve the line of sight when people are coming in and out of the property. And the other thing is, our engineer has done a tremendous job with the cuts and fills that they've done with that land to make it almost level. Right now, that property goes down with. It's made it more level, so it's gonna be much safer. So I think with the, the leveling off of the lot and the safe, uh, height of the low-level fence that preserves line of sight each ways with low-level plantings, you know, that, that's what the site plan wanted us to do, but, but I would be very happy to come and meet with you and talk about anything else, but that's the reason why the plantings there are very low for safety reasons.
One more thing for you, uh, somebody dropped a large block, blocks off when they doorstep across the street today, pretty good size, I can see it from here.
Oh.
Door stepping your house, well, your new house.
I'm sorry, i- it's probably for the cut and cap, because we're gonna be cutting the water capping it, so it might be some material that's related to that, which is what, um, the board of health wanted us to do, uh, because we're tying everything into the sewer. So, thank you for that, I'll, I'll be up over the weekend to, to check that out, and maybe I can come over and say hello at that time, and.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out in the, uh, audience that wishes to be heard either for or against this application?
Again, we have a hand, but she, I'm sending her a request, but she's not responding.
There's a, there's a Steve Chervanian out looking, and Mr. Chervanian, are you there, you can, free to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have a few things here, and so I don't expect them all to be answered right away, but, um, one of the questions I have is, uh, why is a special permit needed to this project, what is the main issue that's pushing it forward? And so what kind of variances are needed, and why, what, uh, did I miss that somewhere along the line, or? Or, uh, can someone explain that to me? So the other thing is, as of now, the traffic exceeds down Locust Road, the posted miles per hour. And, uh, with approximately another eighteen vehicles, which is nine units with two vehicles approximately per unit, the traffic obviously will, uh, increase exponentially. So will the town lower the miles per hour on Locust Road to accommodate the heavier traffic due to this project? And I have another question, what are the neighbors' recourse if there are issues with noise and litter from the project? What are the assurances that Cedar Pond will be protected from the runoffs from this project? And if there are issues, what recourse will the neighbors in the town have to protect Cedar Pond? And I want to say that I completely agree with Lynn on her statements about this project, because I really feel that you're out to make money. I really feel that you're out to make money and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the property is actually very cheap. And what people are going to pay out money and money to live here. It, it's obviously something that you wanna make money on, you could be as altruistic as you think you are, but obviously, the bottom line is to make money, and I understand that. But don't try to, you know, bamboozle us down here. And I would like to have the fellow, the, the gentleman that is, uh, doing this project to come to our house, which is on twenty-six Locust Road. We live, we're retired, we're on nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. We have two bedrooms. We have a large living room, we have a kitchen. We're doing quite well. We live part, uh, live down here in the Cape, we've moved back. We work part-time at Shaw's. And our mortgage, luckily, we don't have one at this particular point. And we have a garage under the building. So why do you have to build something so big to accommodate all these people? I think it's obviously a money grab. Our door is open, come in, take a look. You wanna come in, maybe pare down what you're gonna be building. And go forward from there. So I know I dumped a lot on you at this particular point, but those are questions that I have.
All right, let me, let me ask, um, Mr. Zender, you wanna explain why, why you're here for a special permit, what, what the requirements are?
I'm happy. Yeah, you know, the New Orleans zoning by law, section one sixty-four thirty-one provides for um, apartment development, um, and sets forth criteria for a pool of special permits, not a variance, it's a special permit. Um, um, and, and the criteria set forth in the bylaw, and our narrative has identified all the criteria and our responses to those criteria. Um, you know, some of the other comments about Mr. Riley being out there to make money and bamboozling people, like, I can't respond to those comments, I don't think.
No, I didn't.
No, I can't. Um, but, you know, look, this is a project, the town went to town meeting with, with the, with the long assistance of the planning board and developed a bylaw to try to create additional housing in the town. And, and this project is right dead smack in the wheelhouse of what this bylaw is asking people to do to develop housing in the town. Uh, we can discuss whether it's bigger than somebody else's house or smaller than somebody else's house.
No.
But, um, you know, that's for anybody who wants to be a part to, to, to develop what they wanna develop. And so these are, you know, at sixteen hundred and forty-five square feet without the, without the optional study, they're not large homes. Um, they're not small homes, but they're, you know, based on what I've seen in, in my permitting activities in the last thirty years, I don't think that with that study at nineteen hundred square feet, these are overly large homes based on what people are looking for these days, and so and I don't think it's up to the zoning board to even get into that. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's really for the board to determine, is there an important unmet need in housing? I think the answer is yes. Um, um, has the applicant laid out this project in terms of its roadways? Its traffic patterns, its grading, its drainage to address Mr. Chervanian's question about Cedar Pond? Uh, this is probably one of the only properties on Locust Road that has a comprehensive drainage plan that maintains, you know, both grading and catch basins to maintain drainage within the four corners of the site. Um, uh, as well as, um, you know, sewer and water. So, uh, with regard to noise and litter, you know, it's, it's anticipated as we anticipate with projects like this, that people will occupy these as residential homes. There's a local noise bylaw which will address any, any, um, you know, incidents that happen if somebody is making noise after the appointed hour or in excess of the decimal limit, we fully expect that people can call the police and have that bylaw, um, addressed in some way. But, um, I, I, I'm not sure how else I could respond to the comments, Mr. Mulligan.
That's fine, Mr. Zender, I think you've done it well. Uh, Mr. Chervanian, I, I draw your attention in this application to a very extensive, um, plan for dealing with water runoff. Uh, it's a very extensive plan, uh, well beyond my ability to fully comprehend, but, uh, and beyond that, I would note that, um, Mr. Evers is building commissioner, has responsibility, if there is water runoff, he has the responsibility to, um, uh, re- meet, require the owner to remediate that. Yep, yep.
If I may, I.
I appreciate the, the response, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, and I, I would be happy to meet with Steve Chervanian and his wife uh, at twenty-six Locust, Locust Road, and I will do that. And also, just one other thing, as I said earlier, um, to one of the members with their questioning. The interesting thing about this plan is that it's three bedrooms, but the first floor of the house has a master bedroom, so the first floor is one thousand and eight square feet. So a prospective buyer could say, geez, we just want the first floor and we'd like to take the second and maybe in the future, finish the second. Or, and so, there's a little flexibility built into these, this project to accommodate people's different interests and, and what they could pay for, you know, and also the optional study is another thing. So I think this is a plan that really it will be a very nice project for the town, the grass is always gonna be cared for, the grounds are always gonna look beautiful, the trash, there's private trash receptacles built double trash bins on each unit, so there's not like a, a central trash area, it's gonna be, these are like your own home, your own yard and based on other projects we've done like this, it, it's gonna be beautiful and I'll do my best to make it nice for the town and I very, I will definitely meet with Mr. Chervanian and his wife, and I'll also meet with the LeCayerson, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, other, other individuals wishing to speak?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Bunzek, do you wanna speak?
Good evening, Todd Bunzek, sixty-three Locust Road, uh, a butter to the north. Um, we're just, uh, wanting to make a statement to make sure that the lighting by law is met and that all the exterior lighting is covered and faces down. I think there was a proposal maybe to have onion lamps which would not meet that criteria. So, uh, we just wanna try and keep the lighting nominal. I mean, I realize there's safety issues, but if we could not have a bunch of lights that are sho- shi- shining outward, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Riley, you wanna speak to that, Mrs. Zender?
And I could say that when we went through the, um, architectural review committee, the two lights at the entrance tied as you come in.
Yes.
Down lighting. But the, the light in front of each home, there'll be on a post that, that would be on a onion light, but that's like what you have at most houses, but you know, we, we can try to ask them to use lighting that's not excessively bright, you know, for that. But, um, but certainly the two coming in at the entrance are the, the down lighting which was requested by historic, so.
We could, yeah. We, we, uh, to the chair, we, we could limit the wattage of the bulk, yeah, I can lamp by through the condo docks.
That would be good. That would be good.
I'm not sure, Todd, I'm not sure what that should be. But we could limit those to, you know, some, you know, some, some wattage that would keep those from being overly bright. Okay. They said, this, my one comment. Other than what we discussed in the past, thank you.
Is there Mr. Daisy, Mr. Daisy, you wanna speak or? Miss Gamzy? Mr. Daisy, you looking to speak? Is it Daisy, Paula Daisy, it says on the.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm, uh, Matt Daisy, uh, already had mentioned me earlier, my company is Champion Builders. Um, I've had a lot of experience in providing both, um, market housing and affordable housing. We currently have, uh, just completed a small project in Sandwich. Um, and we're in the middle of a town sponsored project in the town of Duxbury, uh, with the twenty single family homes which is a forty B with a special component of modern housing as well. So, uh, to the Lynn's point, really, I just, uh, wanted to reemphasize to you and Matt's comments, and it seems like the whole board is just uh, has, has the right idea for housing for nurses, schoolteachers and that type of thing, and it's it's not just a challenge in Orleans, it's throughout, seems to be throughout the Cape and southeastern Mass, it's been a real challenge for us. Uh, I grew up in Hyannis, my dad had company Daisy Homes and we thrived on building the small twenty-four thirty-two Cape and Ranch and all over the Cape and, uh, uh, in that, you know, that price of eight hundred thousand or eight fifty or nine hundred thousand. I just checked on Zillow while we were on the, on the, on the meeting here and I punched in uh, a million dollars or less in the town of Orleans and there's nothing on the market on Zillow. Tonight. So that's nothing that we did or can do or people can do, but that's what the facts are. It's unfortunate for sure, but that's where, you know, that's, that's the reality of today. And we were very surprised in, in Duxbury on this exact same thing that Lynn had mentioned, it's, it's phenomenal. Uh, in the very least, okay, and uh, I think this project and, and the zoning rules and the regulations and the bylaws, you know, for the for the if, I know it's tricky for people to talk, you know, they, they say one thing, but then they say, well, and the houses are too expensive, well, okay, well, that means that the zoning has to not allow eight or nine or ten units, they're gonna have to allow twenty units to that sixty thousand square feet and smaller lots, can that be, can that be done? Yes. There are some communities that are doing it, but that's, that's a whole nother issue, but, uh, I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the the concern of the board and and the diligence, uh, it's really, uh, it's, it's a lightning to, to see that this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daisy. Miss Gamzy, you wish to speak or no? Is there anyone else out there wishes to speak or make a comment?
I don't see any more hands raised.
Thank you very much.
Hello? Hold on, sorry, just one more.
Oh, yeah, Miss Gamzy.
Oh, and now it's gone.
Oh.
We can hear you, Miss Gamzy, if you wanted to make a comment or ask a question. No, now, now we can't, you've turned your microphone off.
Hi, this is Judith Gamzy, I live on sixty-four Locust Road. And I really am very upset about the size of this unit, of the number of units that are, uh, being built here. I'm also confused because it's, sometimes it's called a condominium, sometimes it's called an apartment. From what I understand, tonight, it's going to be condominiums. But once again, if it's apartment, are we gonna get involved with the short-term rental business that's going on in Orleans? Second thing is, I don't know if you could see this or not. Uh, this is the FY twenty-four Community Preservation Projection Application. And this states that while the current focus of historical commissions have been on the main street area of East Orleans, we have identified other areas of town with historic resources are concentrated and streetscapes are relatively intact. Examples are Monument Road, Taunset Road and the Locust Canal Road area. There are three streets in the town of Orleans that are still of, of historic value. And this is, this proposal is actually ruining our, the Orleans, the Canal Road and Locust Road chances of being in that, that protected area. Nobody has addressed that or said, why is this going there? I believe that nine units are way, way, way too much for for one point three acres. It's, I don't know what grass can possibly be cut. I don't know where you could plant any grass there. But I am very adamantly opposed to this, this proposition.
Thank you, Miss Gamzy. Um, I don't know, is there any way to respond to that, Mr. Zender, but, um, if you wish to. Uh, why, why don't we do this? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Um, Mr. Mrs. Zender, now, you're looking, you're not looking to take a vote tonight, we're looking to continue this until we have a, um, final, uh, report from the, um, planning board.
I would ask the board to continue at your next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm not sure we're going to meet in two weeks, we may, depending on what happens later in this meeting, as of right now, we have nothing scheduled for the meeting two weeks, but we do have something scheduled for the first meeting in July. The first Wednesday in July.
Well, if, if we could schedule for the next, for the next two weeks, then if you, if you're not having it then we could go to the next meeting after that would be great.
All right, we, we can, we can have it, I suppose we can have it.
I, I think it would be.
We have nothing else on schedule, but we, we may have something, uh, the next, we may have something later tonight, uh, that needs to be continued also.
So what would that be?
What's that?
That'll be the meeting of the twenty-first of, uh, June.
Yes. Is that, is that?
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be fine, we would be very happy.
You, you expect the planning board on the thirteenth, is that correct?
We do.
Yeah. Well, that would be time enough. All right, anything else to come, uh, on, on this, uh, in this case?
Mr. Chair, can you just clarify, are we, are we done with public comment and is that closed? Are we, are we coming back to hear the planning board results and then vote?
Yes, we're not gonna vote tonight. We're going to, uh, continue this to the next meeting, but I will, I will ask, does anyone else wish to speak? And hasn't spoken.
I let in someone called Noah.
Uh, Noah.
Oh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, thank you, my name is Noah Gamzy, I'm Judy's son, I live at sixty-four Locust Road. Um, and I guess my question is, um, just like Doug and Lori and my mom were saying, there's a lot of historic homes around here and my question is is anybody on that guy, side of the street gonna be able to put nine units on their acre or whatever? Um, just because it's owned that way, 'cause if so, I think it's gonna detract from definitely the, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Uh, if not the value. Thanks, basically, that's my question, is, is anybody on that side of the road with an acre, it's gonna be able to put in nine units, because if, if that's the case I think we're heading in the wrong direction, thank you.
All right, uh, it, it depends on the size of the lot, basically, Noah.
Yeah.
It depends on the size of the lot, if it's, if the, uh, a lot admits the, the zoning by law has, has, uh, requirements for how much you can build on, uh, what size lot. So there's no, no, there's a general answer, yeah, you can put multiple units in there depending on the size of the lot. But how many is a question of the size of the lot?
I understand, just, that's just how it's zoned and um, like in that, um, historical preservation proposal, um, Locust Road is one of the roads being considered for preservation. So that's it, basically, that's just my comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gamzy. All right, um, I guess we'll do, I, we even need a motion to continue, I guess we do need a motion to continue, a motion to continue this, uh, hearing and for the next meeting on, uh, June twenty-first.
Mr. Mull.
Is there a second?
I can.
All right, let me, uh, let me call the roll, who was the second, I'm gonna get these down.
It's me. Austin.
Uh, Martin, okay. All right, let me call the roll, um, Matt?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn?
Yes.
Bruce?
I lost an opportunity to comment, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, the one thing I wanted to add is that if anybody checks the home sales on Locust Road itself it's very instructive as to the price relative to that neighborhood. I vote yes, thank you.
All right. Um, Martin?
Yes.
And Austin?
Yes.
All right, um, this, uh, hearing is closed, thank you, Mr. Zender.
Thank you all.
And all those, um, who participated, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The next item of business?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
It's Tom.
Tom.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm suddenly not feeling very well.
All right, Tom, good, very good. You're free, you, you, go home, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Excuse.
Um, I apologize to the board.
Not at all, I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, the next item of business is the case, uh, two, two, zero, two, Core States Group CEO Stonefield Engineering Design. Uh, is there someone here to represent, uh, Core States Group? Oh, boy.
Letting them all in?
Okay.
Mr. Mulligan, I'm gonna sign up and recuse on this case.
All right, thanks, Matt. Uh, I see, uh, Kevin Kelly and, uh, Josh Klein. Who's, uh, who's presenting and, uh, Mark Bobrovsky? All right, I'm not going to go, who, who is, uh, looking to present tonight, uh? All right, I'm not going to go. Who, who is, uh, looking to present tonight, uh, on behalf of, uh, Core States?
It would, we can give Mark, Mark, Mr. Bobrowski's our, our land use attorney. So we'll just give him a second to get set up and he'll, he'll start the presentation.
All right, very good. Mr. Bobrowski, you're welcome to, uh, sorry, you're welcome to turn on your, uh, microphone and begin your presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bobrowski, my office is in Concord. I represent Core States Group, your applicant this evening. Uh, Core States proposes to raise the former restaurant located at Nine West Road and to build a new bank building for a Chase franchise. Uh, the bank building will be approximately 3,400 square feet and there will be a drive-through ATM. I'm going to ask, uh, Kevin Kelly, our architect, to walk you through the architecturals first. And then Josh Klein will take you through both the traffic and civil engineering report.
All right, very good. Thank you. Josh Klein, are you, uh, with Core States? Who's, who's next, Mr. Klein?
So Mr. Mr. Kelly is the architect with Core States Group. We'll start.
Kelly, who are you with, Mr. Kelly?
I am with Core States Group.
Core States Group, all right, all right. Please begin.
All right, uh, do we happen to have the elevations or plans, uh, on display or?
Uh, we all have copies, but we don't have any on display.
Right.
Have you been asked, have you asked, uh, the IT people to put something on display?
Uh, if required, I can share my screen so that we can see the elevations and plan on display.
All right.
I would, I would share your, your screen, Kevin.
All right, so what we are planning is currently a, uh, approximately 3,300 square foot Chase Bank. Uh, I guess I can start with the elevations first. Uh, the majority, it's going to be a single story and the finish that's going to be applied here is going to be a clapboard. Uh, the main finish is going to be a dark gray with a light gray, uh, clapboard being used for the main entry portions of the gable and back of house. Uh, we're going to be using a white wood, uh, storefront with white hardy board trim, uh, two by, a, uh, one by six hardy wood trim to go around all storefront and entries. Uh, roof is going to be a black asphalt shingle, uh, while also utilizing a black metal roofing for uh, the dormers and specific areas around the gables. We'll also be using a white vinyl for the gable openings as well with a, uh, goose neck lightings for the signage and exterior lighting. Uh, we've tried, we have worked with the architecture board to incorporate as much, uh, local architectural design within the exterior, uh, within the exterior elevations to make it, uh, fit as naturally as possible within the surrounding area. As for the interior, uh, this is going to have one 24-hour vestibule that will have one through wall ATM servicing it. There will be one, uh, interior ATM as well for the lobby, as well as a drive-through, which will have one through wall ATM and one night depository. Uh, for the space, we are currently proposing six private offices and one conference room. There will also be two booths, uh, right outside the lobby and a small seating area with a digital display. Uh, the bank will have two tellers, one being a manual teller, the other being an accessible teller. There will be no safety deposit boxes. There will only be a cash chest, uh, near the back of house. And in the back of house areas in question, there will be two, uh, unisex restrooms, janitor closets, an employee lounge, data room, and the equipment room for the drive-up ATM. And I believe that concludes the architectural plans.
You want, you want to tell us the height of the, uh, building?
Uh, yes, sir. At its highest point, uh, the tower is 24 feet 5 inches above the ground, while the majority of the rest of the building is 22 feet 6, 6 inches above grade.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Kelly? Who's next?
Perfect. I can, I can go next. My name is Josh Klein. I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design. I am a licensed engineer, um, in the state. We are the civil engineer as well as the traffic engineer on the project. Um, as Mr. Kelly said, we did, um, kind of go through the architectural review committee process where we received a unanimous, um, kind of approval to move forward. We also went through the site plan review committee pro- process as well. Um, I'll touch on it in my presentation. There was only one comment coming out of our meeting with the site planner review committee, and it was related to kind of the fire apparatus accessing the site. We did meet with the fire chief as well as the fire official and kind of addressed their concerns with some slight modifications to the driveway. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of bring the, the board aware that we, kind of coming out of that meeting, we did meet with the fire chief and were able to kind of address their concerns. Um, so as I will just kind of run through just a quick, quick run-through of the, the plan, some of the changes made. And I think why we have, I think, a really nice application here tonight. So I, I just have the cover sheet up of the site plans that, that were submitted. Uh, I'm sure the board's familiar with the location and the public, but just kind of touching on it. We're, we're kind of at the corner of West Road and Old Kings Highway. Um, you know, this is the, uh, a longstanding commercial shopping center in town. Um, it was a former restaurant that was right at the corner that, that has been closed. Uh, so this is, you know, Chase will be kind of ground leasing a portion of the property, um, and constructing these improvements. So we will be kind of demoing the building, um, kind of clearing the parking lot to kind of reconstruct these improvements as a whole. Uh, but again, the, the shopping center itself kind of remains. So we're not providing any new access points to the public right of way. We're not, um, you know, kind of having any off-site, you know, impacts associated with the project.
Before you leave, I want to go back there for a second. I want to point out something that I'll maybe back to later in the hearing.
Yeah, so probably.
Put that back up. If you, if you, uh, uh, expand out and close that, I want to show you the highway, the state highway there now. Uh, you see that's, that, um, Grand Army of the Republic, Highway Route 6.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's the clover leaf there coming off. Most people coming into town for the first time in Orleans, come up this road and, and stop at that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So it's an important site for the town. It's the first, uh, it's the first thing you see in Orleans. It's a very important, uh, little piece of property there. You notice diagonally across is a disgusting looking, uh, electrical station. Uh, and then there's a, a leafy corner across the street and a, and a credit union across the corner. But that's the first, that's the first, uh, entry to Orleans that people see coming off the highway. So this, this parcel to many people in town is very important in terms of its, uh, it's how it looks from the streetscape. Just want to make that point and get back to it later.
No, it's a great point and, you know, I've now, you know, been to, to the town, you know, multiple times. So I, I felt it my first time coming to the town as well as multiple times over. And, you know, I think that's why we have a great application tonight. I mean, we have a, you know, a Class A tenant that's looking to kind of come in and really clean up a, a strong corner, um, in town. So what I'll, what I'll do is kind of move to the, the landscaping plan, uh, just because it shows the improvements. I think will help us kind of talk about the project a little bit. So, you know, in the, this project, we've been working on this project for, you know, almost, um, you know, over a year. Um, it's a long process for us to get to this point. Uh, we went through many meetings with the architectural review committee. We went through multiple meetings with the site plan review committee. Um, we did a lot of iterations of the layout. We kind of used the town design guidelines to get to this point, you know, wanting to kind of create and maintain that open space between us and the highway and us in the public road, kind of looking to push the parking back, kind of have the building closer to the road and the parking behind the building, kind of allow the parking to blend in a little bit with the parking that's out there today. But I think one of the, the big things you can see, you know, especially when you look out at this new proposal compared to what's there today is, you know, we're introducing a lot more open space. I mean, today you have a, a 5,000 square foot building that's pushed up a little bit closer to the road. Then you have a sea of asphalt behind it. You have a larger kind of open space parking lot design. And what you have here is we have a, a much smaller building, again, at the corner, kind of establishing that corner. Um, and then you do have kind of the parking facilities that are behind it, but it's broken up with a lot, a lot of landscaping. So we have landscape islands and because of the, you know, the necessity of the ATM with the use, um, we do have this nice, you know, kind of open space right in the middle of the parking lot. So where previously you just had, you know, one big asphalt parking area. Now we're able to introduce trees and shrubs and open space into the parking lot. Um, so again, you, West Road is now kind of to the top of the page. So the, the access to the shopping center remains. We have two entrance points to the, kind of the Chase lease area is what we're calling it. Um, and the, those kind of align with the drive aisle across the way on the right. And then on the left, kind of allowing it to, to, you know, avoid a conflict point by placing it kind of mid, mid-block between these two entrance points. Um, so as Mr. Kelly described, the drive-up ATM is on the left-hand side of the page that I'm kind of circling right now where the bump out is. The main entrance is, there's a dual entrance to this building. Uh, there's two doors, so that's where that 24-hour vestibule is. Then you have your ADA parking and parking along front. Um, I actually want to make sure it looks like, um, this PDF is, sorry, not the latest PDF that was filed with the board. It's the same PDF, uh, we just added, I think, a really nice addition, working with the architectural review board that I want everyone to see. All right, perfect. Um, so same plan, though the change was, if you see these gray boxes, um, on the screen, these are raised, um, stone, um, or granite, um, planter. So they provide both vehicular protection from those parking spaces as well as kind of introduce a little bit more landscaping along with the front of the building. Um, so I did want to make sure that was shown. And then the other thing you're noticing the difference with this plan is that blue line just shows you the outline of the, of the restaurant. So you can see it's, it's much bigger. It's a little bit closer to the, to Cranberry Highway. Um, you know, kind of compared to what the footprint of the Chase Bank is today. Um, you know, the, the location of the ATM was a, was a key part of this. You know, we wanted to, you know, we were, you know, we have a, you know, a unique situation where we're at a corner lot. Um, but we want to protect the visibility of the ATM. So by, you know, kind of putting the ATM on the left-hand side of the building, um, or to the north, we're able to kind of shed that viewpoint from, from Cranberry Highway. Um, and then through kind of introducing new landscaping as well as keeping the existing hedge and introducing kind of cleaning it up and fixing it, uh, we're able to kind of create that landscaping screening along West Road. Uh, one of the other nice kind of parts of this application is we are keeping those existing mature trees along Cranberry Highway. I think that's a really big key, um, to this development is kind of protecting. And then kind of throughout the site is introducing, you know, new landscaping and new landscape opportunities. So we have, you know, headlight screening that surround the perimeter of the parking areas. We're introducing, you know, both perimeter trees as well as interior parking area trees. Um, we're providing a nice path, you know, from the, from the right of way to the building and kind of providing foundation landscaping around the entirety of the building, um, which I think will, you know, kind of create a, you know, the elevation sometimes don't do, do the trick to kind of introduce what that sight line is really going to be. There will be bicycle racks as well at the front of the building, um, as well. So, I mean, that overall, I think, touches on a lot of the site elements. I mean, I think the big thing to take away here is, is the reduction in pervious surfaces. You know, I can get into stormwater more, but I mean, this naturally is going to provide a benefit. You know, naturally improves water quality, naturally improves, um, recharge volume and naturally improves the peak runoff rate. You know, from a traffic perspective, we did prepare a report that was submitted. Uh, you know, the Chase Bank by itself does not generate over 100 trips. So the Chase Bank alone would not, you know, trigger the need for a traffic impact study. And then when you start to look at, you know, the restaurant that was here before, you know, there was already, you know, that restaurant you know, generated much more trips than, than the Chase did in itself. Um, but Chase is also, it's, it's a pass-by use. And I think that's an important to think about. I mean, this is a commercially zoned area. You know, we don't have any residents kind of around us. We don't have any residential zones abutting us. I mean, this is where you want commercial uses. I mean, this is where you want these type of projects to exist. Um, and what's nice about Chase from a traffic perspective, it is, it's a pass-by use. Um, so we're not adding a substantial amount of new trips on the roadway. You know, people aren't, you know, I hate to say it because we do work with them, you know, it's not a Chick-fil-A. People aren't going to, you know, drive three, four, five towns over, you know, to come to Chase. We're really, we're taking, you know, trips or vehicles that are already in, in this roadway network now. Um, and that would be going to this site anyways, or would be using kind of this highway point, you know, today and kind of then again, using the site. So from a traffic perspective, you know, there'd be no, you know, significant impact or adverse impact to the surrounding roadway network as part of the project either. I'm, I'm happy to get more technical this evening, um, if, if the board would like. I'm happy to answer any, you know, site or traffic related questions. But I think we, you know, are excited, excited to be here, excited to get to this point and, you know, continuing to move this application forward.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I just want to make one, one point. I looked at the planning plan and, um, I appreciate that you're adding more plants, but I've never seen a planning plan, uh, given to us where, uh, specific trees weren't mentioned or the, or the kind of trees and the kind of, it's generic. It's a generic, uh, deciduous trees, generic and, and ifrist trees, generic ground cover. I think, uh, given going back to my initial point of the importance of the visual aspect of this corner, I think, uh, y- your application would have been much stronger if you had, uh, identified some specific, uh, trees that would, uh, be unusual or make some, uh, uh, more visual appeal. You're sort of buying your, you're saying, now plant more plants, basically. Every other plan I've ever seen on a planting program has specific and, and identified what we're going to do here.
So just to clarify, we do have a plant schedule. So every plant, shrub, grass that you see is identified on the plan. So if you just look in that top left corner?
Well, I, how about the, the materials you gave us? I couldn't find that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to. Is there any specific, so just a name?
No, no, I'm, I'm just talking about, I, I guess, I guess I'll get to my point. I thought you, you, you've already provided, you and your previous speakers, previous speaker gave us more information that was in the packet. Uh, when reviewing this packet, uh, I thought it was, um, we're going to get to the body of it. I thought it was completely inadequate as a written submission. Uh, I thought that, uh, it was shamefully inadequate, frankly. You have done verbally now, you've made, uh, you've answered many of the questions that I had after. I spent a lot of time on this application because I expected somebody like the name of Chase coming here would be a model application. Uh, I found it to be, uh, not only modeled, but, uh, shockingly insufficient. Already you provided more information than, uh, of questions that I had, you and the pre- previous speaker. Um, but I, I don't have, I don't think I have this chart with a specific, um, trees mentioned. I, all I have is a chart that says deciduous, coniferous and ground cover. Um, anyway, so let's go on. We'll, we'll, we'll get, well. Yeah, I guess, let's go to the, let's go to the application itself, okay? This is what, what I, I want to respond to here. I don't know if anyone's ever read this before. I don't know if anyone has ever read this application because it looks like no one could possibly have read this before. Uh, the adequacy of the site. It, it is accommodated, is misspelled, circulation, prop, propsoed use in harmony with the surrounding commercial uses. It looks like, uh, it, it's like we're, this is a, uh, it's a bunch of locals, yokels. We can just pass this off. They're all going to be happy to have a bank branch here. And this process isn't worth spending much time on. The next suitability of the site, propsoed, uh, come in cursial. And the next, uh, statement, uh, you, you, you identified tonight, the first time, that there will be less traffic. I didn't see that anywhere in the proposals. I've been through everything. I didn't, I mean, I, I assumed that was correct, but it should have been stated somewhere in the application. Go to the next, the next line, the, again, the plantings, they were generic, not specific on this very important block in, in town. And if you lived anywhere near this town or had any local import, you would know that the, the diagonal corner is a, is a topic of great soreness to the town, how that, uh, people coming in see that substation so that it, it, it magnifies. So that it, it, it magnifies the importance of this block. Okay, so that's why I was concerned about the uh, then we have adequacy of sewage disposal. What, what is a sewage disposal situation? What kind of sewage disposals do you have at the site?
So the, the site is currently on septic. I think as the board knows that phase one of the, kind of the sewer system in town is, is going into effect. So we will be connecting to it. The landlord's engineers already preparing the plans for the connection. So we would be proposing to connect to that new sewer system.
So you're going to wait to connect before you open?
Correct, as of now.
That would be nice, that would be nice in the application as opposed to saying that their adequate sewage disposal on a system that hasn't been used for five or six years certainly couldn't be adequate. I, 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 you know, and, and then uh, uh, the water service and drainage, dry, drainage is provided support. Uh, I don't know what assquake utilities are. I've looked up everywhere, assquake utilities. I, I don't think anyone read this before it was submitted to us. And then you talked about increasing open space, no mention until the oral, oral presentation about impervious services. That's exactly what the issue with the question asked for, really. You just say open space, well, open space isn't impervious or pervious, it's open space, but you addressed it orally. But we, we have the object, uh, we have the obligation to, to, to read these things and be prepared to ask questions. And, and I had expected so much more from uh, from the largest bank in America and I think the best managed bank in America, frankly. I'm a career banker, so I was disappointed. And then I went to see the prior uh, the, the, the prior variances, the prior opinions of this board and there's no one here who can read those. Not a single person. You submitted a whole section of stuff with overplayed, I embarrassed somebody asking to read it, copy read. I, 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 I've been on this board for six years and have never seen a sloppier application, frankly. Having said that, having said that, I happen to be a, a lifetime banker. I have great admiration of the greatest banker of our generation is Jamie Dimon. And I think that the uh, a, a well-run branch of a well-run bank has tremendous community benefits, but they are not demonstrated in this application. Now you have my frustrations of wasting several hours this weekend trying to answer questions that normally come up. And then there's no reference to the fact that uh, under the bylaw, you have to address uh, one sixty-four thirty-eight, which has a number of uh, considerations, not all of which are pertinent, but which you are supposed to comment on. No comment whatsoever in the application. Plus, I bet if you had it, I couldn't read it anyway. Uh, I don't even, even, I won't even bother to spell check before sending this into us. It's insulting, frankly. It, 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 it makes this uh, this whole process look like not worthy of uh, of a professional attention. By the largest bank in America, much as, a much admired uh, institution uh, led by the, I think, the leading American spokesman for American business. But, be that as it may, so now you, now you uh, have my frustrations here, which uh, you don't know me, but it's a, it's a rare display, by, it distresses my frustration of reading this this weekend.
Our apologies, Mr. Chairman. I think uh, if you'll give us a second chance, we'll put together a much more comprehensive package. We have to go see the planning board yet. We'll add some comments on section thirty-eight and we'll add the comments from the planning board. We'll, we'll do a better job as we go along.
Well, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll let other members of the board speak, but I think that suggestion of asking for a continuance to amend the application would be uh, well advised, Mr. Bobrovsky.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Other, other members of the board who wish to disassociate themselves with my uh, my comments, uh, feel free to do so. I didn't uh, alert any of you to my frustrations with this and my disappointment, frankly, because as a, as a lifelong banker and former bank regulator, I was looking forward to reading a, a model application.
I, I want uh, a continuation of one of the points you had made about um, just the visual characteristics of that intersection. You, you've made mention that across the street, uh, specifically with the, the choices that they made to level some trees last year. Uh, certainly degraded that, that intersection. Um, the Hart and Kettle Restaurant, you know, red, white trim wood, has a small beautiful gazebo up front. It's a very, very iconic um, area in town. And like, like you had mentioned, Jerry, it's, it's, it is something that every person, you know, either needs to pass through or comes very close to passing through, um, as they go through town. Um, and so as such, I think the, the visual characteristics of that intersection are of, you know, ex- extreme importance. So my specific question is, this has gone through architectural review and they've, everyone's approved the, the visual characteristics of the, the building. What is the material of the, uh, the siding of the, the building?
Uh, for the clapboard, it is a uh, it is hardy plank.
Okay, is that a manufactured product or is that a natural product?
A manufactured product.
Okay, um, looking through, um, I would say unfortunately, I'm, I'm close to the intersection, but not physically at the intersection. Looking through Google Street View, um, looking at some of the visual characteristics of similar properties. Bank across the street has a mixture of some sort of, I assume vinyl siding uh, and wood shingle. Um, there's a lot of exposed brick within that parking lot itself, again, mixed with siding and, and shingle. Like, my personal thoughts are it looks fairly out of place. I think certainly the, the brand has some amount of um, uh, re- required brand guidelines uh, that I'm, I'm certainly, um, that I certainly appreciate. Uh, but I would say a fully vinyl side or fully uh, I guess, non-shingled, non-brick building with, with a fairly out of place and fairly corporate in a, the small town like this. Uh, if the architectural reviewer has gone through and approved it, um, I'd say they're certainly more qualified than, than I am, but I'd say qualitatively, as someone who grew up in this town, spent twenty-something years here growing up, going to that restaurant and just driving through town, um, it, it really is the key uh, visual characteristic of the town, the first thing people see. Um, honestly, just the loss of that gazebo is something that I think would be a, is a very strong loss for the town. Um, though I understand the, the purpose of a gazebo at a bank would not be fairly useful. Uh, that's, that's all I had to say. Um, appreciate your time.
Other members of the board. Well, Mr. Bobrovsky, you, uh, oh, Lynn, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what approvals are still needed. You said you need to go before the planning board. What else? Anything else?
As I understand it, we need to go to the planning board for their recommendation to the ZBA for the special permit. I don't think there's anything that we have left other than communication with the planning board, uh, as they see fit.
Have you been to the site plan review committee?
Yes.
And they, they approve that?
Yes.
Is, is the Old Kings Highway Commission have to look at this? I don't know if that's the exact name for it, but I thought there was a commission that looked at any structure going up along six A, the Old Kings Highway.
I don't know, I don't know what they're, where it begins and where it ends.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I know that down by that shopping center, they had something to say about what went, was going in there and they actually turned down a structure, but I, I was commenting on the side view, if you look at Shaw's, that the facade that faces six A, their signage is backlit as opposed to what I think I saw from your architectural drawings is you had down lighting to show the, the Chase uh, signage. That's rather bright and stark. I was wondering if something that's a little bit softer might, might play better in that intersections caused to having a whole bunch of downward lighting on that facade.
We can take a look at that.
I'm, I'm glad somebody's, wants to do something uh, with that space. Uh, but I do agree, it is a sort of modern day office building look.
Yeah, well, I presume they're carrying the theme from uh, Chase, Chase is trying to get a uniform theme like uh, golden arches, a blue diamond, whatever that parallelogram, whatever that thing is.
Yeah, I will clarify, I see no issue with a, a, a bank such as Chase opening at that particular location. Uh, I think it's, yeah, the building's sat empty for many years. Um, and I, I think it's unfortunate that it sat for that long without any use. Uh, and I think uh, another bank would be a perfect, perfectly fine addition to the town, which is my concern, your solar aesthetics.
One, one other, I have one other question, Jerry. Um, uh, with it, um, you said it's not, no, it's not Chick-fil-A. Um, having waited for twenty minutes in Chick-fil-A lines, thank goodness, it's not Chick-fil-A. Um, but I would, you said, you know, only the town's going to use it. And you're not expecting people in neighboring towns who bank at Chase to use it? I guess this is a question about how many Chase outlets we've got. Um, I assume you've got some kind of criteria for how many Chase outlets we've got, you know, per X geography.
It's a great, great question. You know, what we're, what we're more looking at is IT generates pass-by rates based on different types of uses. Um, in banking use, financial institution uses, you know, generate about a thirty to forty percent pass-by rate. So they, you know, they take data from all over the country um, and kind of using similar types of areas, similar types of institutions. Um, and then in, in reality, banking is a, it's a convenience-based use. I mean, today with, you know, what's available on your phone, what's available on the website, um, you know, what you can do at, you know, at other ATMs. Um, you know, again, we, we still don't envision that, you know, a Chase Bank would be something that, you know, people would go a significant distance out of their way to go to, but there will be new trips. I'm not saying all the trips are pass-by, uh, but there are a good portion of the, the trips, they're already on the roadway network today.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to understand, you don't expect people from other towns to come use it? It's, when you say pass-by, I wasn't sure what was meant, but you mean people in town?
Yeah, so there will be people in town that use it, there'll be people a few towns over, there might be people visiting, you know, that will use it. So we, we don't, we don't predict, you know, where they're coming from, you know, in the kind of the data that we're pulling as part of our traffic report. But what we're saying is, you know, there's a good portion of the people that will be coming to this bank that are already driving on that highway today. That they're, they're not coming, coming out of their way to go here. It's just pulling, kind of, we use the word trips, but it's, you know, it's pulling people, it's pulling customers that are on the road today.
Okay.
And Lynn, to answer your other question, it looks like the nearest branch that's not on the island is uh, in Plymouth.
Say that again, I'm, I didn't catch that.
The nearest uh, branch that is not on an island is uh, in Plymouth.
Okay, Plymouth, okay.
You know, the, the point I, the point I should have made is that we have a obligation to have a basis on our findings. And I, I don't think the written materials gave us adequate base to make a finding on this case. And I think Mr. Bobrovsky has requested a uh, a continuation to file amended, or augmented uh, application. And uh, is there a motion to uh, uh, to allow a continuation?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Todd.
Applicant tell us the date of their um, application uh, to the architectural review committee. I'd like to review the minutes.
Let me pull, we did, so we went in front of the architectural review committee, I think, four or five times. So that will be, it will be more than one minute that you will be reading. You give me a second, I can pull up the last date. I want to say April twenty-seventh, but I'm just pulling up our summary.
Nine West Road demolition, yes, that was on April twenty-seventh.
That was our last meeting, um.
Thank you.
And then we did, we attended, I believe, we had three informal, um, and then two finals. So, so I think it was either four, I think four total meetings.
Other comments or questions from the board members? I, I should ask, is there anyone out in the uh, general audience looking to make a comment or um, question? Is there anyone out there, Peggy?
I don't see any hands raised.
All right, great, thank you. Well, um, do I have a motion with Mr. Bobrovsky, would you, uh, we meet every two weeks? Um, would you want to give us an estimate of how long you'd like for continuation?
Um, I think it would be okay to take the twenty-first and if we, if, if we're not quite ready, we're not going to come back until we are. So we'll just ask for a continuance.
All right, well, we, we need a, the rules here, I have to have a date certain, so we'll put it down for the twenty-first.
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion to uh, continue this case till uh, June twenty-first meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded, Mr. Todd.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the roll. Um, Quinn.
Yes.
Uh, Bruce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Uh, Austin.
Yes.
And I'm also here, so it's a six-zero vote. Uh, we look forward to seeing you, Mr. Bobrovsky, with a uh, improved uh, application or amended application.
I'm sure you'll be, I'm sure you'll find it to be better, Mr. Chairman.
I, I hope so. I'm sorry for, I spent a lot of time, uh, enough said. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the uh, last item for our consideration tonight is uh, where is my uh, my uh, heated response, I think I lost my uh, agenda. Anyway, it's uh,
Twenty-two oh-three, Jerry.
Twenty-two oh-three?
Twenty-two oh-three, Chris Lamarcos.
Yep, Chris Lamarcos.
Um, on Thirteen Commerce Drive, converting a warehouse to a um, fitness center.
Yep. Mr. Lamarcos, are you out there? There you are, Chris. You know, um, I, I think I owe an obligation to uh, uh, in light of, in light of the last case. Uh, you know, the, the, this weekend I spent a lot of time on all these matters. And I, I was concerned about Mr. Lamarcos' application. Um, and then I uh, it's, I called him to speak with him to talk about, I, I guess I had called to um, uh, to suggest that he needed to augment his application. In the course of that, I, I learned from him, uh, the process of uh, who he's met with in town. He met with Tom and George and they helped him with this application and what he was looking to do. And uh, I say that by way of distinguishing it. Uh, this, the matter you're going to hear tonight is uh, is uh, using converting a empty warehouse in the middle of the commercial district in town. Uh, a site that uh, I don't think five percent of the people could find in this town. Um, and as opposed to the premier corner by the largest bank in America. So I think we're entitled to um, uh, have different, uh, have different acceptance of adequacy of adequacy of application, especially based on the um, uh, gravity of the situation of the request being asked. Uh, I hope that makes clear what I'm trying to say. Uh, Mr. Lamarcos, uh, we, we spoke this weekend and I explained to you that um, uh, we're looking to see some comments about uh, section one sixty-four thirty-eight. Uh, but first, why don't you start and tell us what you're trying to do and uh, and, and about your plans for the site? Uh, Mr. Lamarcos, you want to tell us what your plans are? You're, you're, you're right, your microphone is off. Are you on phone? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
I apologize, my browser is not allowing me to use the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, I currently own Massachusetts Strength and Conditioning. It's at uh, Four Raver Road, a stone's throw away from Thirteen Commerce Drive. Um, it's my tenth year in business. I'm looking to relocate filing to a much larger facility. The Orleans map number forty-seven, parcel seventy-six in the industrial zone, a tobacco. The Orleans map number forty-seven, parcel seventy-six in the industrial zone at the back of, uh, Commerce Drive. Uh, it's a vacant warehouse as of now. And, uh, I guess Orleans bylaw one sixty-four thirteen footnote four, changing the, of use greater than twenty-five hundred square feet, I need a special permit for that. Um, nothing else is really changing. The traffic won't change because it's the same roads that access my business now. Um, the business, business is currently, I mean, the building's vacant right now. We're going to add, uh, two proposed showers. The noise level, I don't believe will exceed, um, with the normal industrial park, um, I guess, limits. Mr. Mulligan, from that paperwork you sent me, I'm not really sure how much of it pertains to me, but I'm going to go over it for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. No, a lot of it doesn't pertain to you, Mr. Lamarcos, it's generic for anybody, but the ones that depend into you.
Okay, um, the proposal will be located near uses which are similar to the proposed use, that's actually me. I'm the closest gym to it. Um, this gym will have unstaffed hours, where members will be able to sign into the gym using their cell phone. It will have, uh, ten camera security system to keep people safe. It will use, uh, facial recognition software. Um, and, uh, like I said, only members of the facility will be able to enter. Nothing on the outside is changing, except maybe the color of the building. Um, it will definitely service the town's year-round residents just like it does now. And again, the traffic, uh, won't change, the same roads that you accessed my gym from now, which is, uh, Route twenty-eight and Eldridge Parkway, are the same exact roads you'll, you'll access this new location. We're not, there's no exterior trees or uh, anything that will change on the outside of the building. I don't see any safety issues. I mean, that's pretty much it from the
Yeah.
one sixty-four thirteen. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
How many, how many members do you have now, Mr. Lamarcos?
Right now, we're at, um, a little over a hundred people.
Hundred people. And you, and you're closing the Raver Road and to move here?
Yes.
When, when do you expect to do that?
It is possible.
Are you already paying rent on this location?
I've paid four months' rent already. Those locations. I've been informal site plan review, formal site plan review, and then I learned that the formal site plan review that I had to come to this hearing.
Right, okay. Members of the board, questions? Lynn?
Yeah, a question about, um, the, the sewer system. You're going to add three bathrooms and two showers, am I right?
No, the bathrooms are already there.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I'm adding the two showers and I've already replaced the septic system.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, as, as it relates to the, of butters, um, I have here on page four, the list of butters, and I think it has uh, just thirteen Commerce Drive. Is it, is it just that one butter within the, within that area?
No, I believe there's forty-four butters. At least that's what I was charged for.
I, I don't know if you had a chance to, th- this place is a, Commerce Drive is a, is a dirt road at the end of, off of, uh, Raver, is it Raver or is it, um, Goddard?
Finley.
It's Finley, off Finley, yeah, off Finley. And this is a, uh, what I would call a, uh, uh, you know, a, a, a bay, a, 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 a commercial bay, basically. Um, are you, you're the last unit on the end there? Is that what the one that's looks? Is that the one you're going to?
Yeah, it's half, it's half of the former Republic Plumbing Supply Company business. That, that warehouse that Republic Plumbing Supply had,
Yeah.
um, was about ninety-six hundred square feet and I have half of it.
Okay.
Um, and other question is just, um, uh, parking. Um, I'm not sure how many, at your current facility, assuming, I, I, I assume the larger facility would be able to house more people, but what is the parking situation currently like? How many cars currently parked at your, uh, facility? And what does the space look like at the new facility per parking wise?
The parking is actually almost the same, which surprised me. I have about twenty-two parking spaces. And I have an extra three I can use for overflow in the early morning and the late evening that my neighbors have agreed to let me use. Um, I propose to put a sign up with the gym's number, they can text it if the car is in their way and they need it moved, and we'll have it moved.
Okay, yeah, my, my next question was going to be just having additional cars in that area of what was previously an, uh, empty lot. Uh, if you had talked to the neighbors about it, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? It was your pleasure. Any motion?
I'll make a motion. Did we check for public comment first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, man. Um, thank you. Uh, is there anyone out there looking to, um, uh, comment either negatively or positively about this application or to ask any questions? Anyone out there?
No hands raised.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no hands raised. All right, like to close, uh, close the hearing for public comment. Any other questions or comments by members? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the special permit as presented.
Is there, is there a second? Who seconded?
Austin.
Okay. All right, uh, any other comments? I'm going to call the roll. Lynn?
Yes.
Bruce?
He's got his hand up.
Yeah.
I apologize, I was muted, yes, of course.
Oh, yes, all right. Austin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes. Uh, Mr. Lamarcos, you have your special permit, six to zero. Um, good luck in your new location.
Thank you very much, guys.
Welcome, welcome. Uh, I do have one administrative matter I'd like to just talk about, uh, briefly. And, and that is, uh, as a result of, uh, tonight's applications, uh, the issue of, the issue of screening for our applications for adequacy is, uh, has certainly come up. Um, I, I, uh, and, and we were, Lynn and I, when we first started this, uh, a year ago, went to see, uh, people in Town Hall and they promised us that there would be a process to allow, uh, screen to make sure the applications were complete. Uh, we had two tonight that I don't think met that standard. Um, I, 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 if anybody was offended by my little tirade, I, I apologize, but, uh, I was really, uh, I, I was really shocked by the quality of that. I don't think anyone had read that. I don't think anyone had read that before they submitted it to us. If you looked at all the, um,
Spelling was awful.
Oh, yeah. Noticed that, but I didn't.
And then to submit those pages of the, uh, prior decisions, which couldn't be read by anybody. It was just shocking. It was a shocking, uh, it, it was insulting frankly, but anyway, so. So I, I had a second thought, Lynn and I talked about it again, but I had a second thought, a long talk with, uh, Jen Higgins. And, uh, Jen has come along very quickly, very well in terms of the minutes and, and organizing our calendar. And, uh, and, and she's been terrific. And I would rather, rather than, uh, uh, I would like to train, uh, work with Jen. So she's familiar with the elements of an application over the next through, through, within the next few, few meetings. As the application can then meet with her, go through them and, and make sure that, uh, she understands all the essential parts that we need. Uh, and then keep it sort of within the, uh, ZBA's control of who, of our quality control. So if that, uh, it's a change, it's a change, Lynn, from what you and I had thought.
But I thought that Jen should, if we were to have met with, um, Missouri, Mr. Missouri and, and Tom Evers, that we would, Jen should come along because.
Yeah. I, I think it's easier, you know, uh, uh, on this last case, it turns out that George and Tom, this, you know, this guy had rented this stuff and he was a young guy trying to make a living and move this to this non-issue place, uh, and, and, uh, George and Tom had told him that was all very satisfactory, so. And I had called to tell him he needed to give us more, but I, I reneged on that as, as I learned his story. Uh, but I think if we control it with Jen, I think it's going to be more satisfactory and it'll prevent, um, issues like tonight. This, this, both of these probably would have been sent back, uh, uh, earlier, but, uh, anyway, so.
Can I, uh, add a request to that?
Sure.
Not, not to pile on. But I, it's subtle, but I think it's important. When the files get uploaded, if she could keep the nomenclature consistent, it'd be really helpful. I find myself on these more recent cases, searching for the files that go with each. And the, the old way was to have a prefix with case and then the case number, so they all float in order. And, and, and again, it's a subtle but important point in trying to access the documents efficiently.
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't find the documents for the, um, the seaside condos. I, I never found them online.
Took me a while, but.
I just found, uh, the, if you go to the town's calendar and go to the ZBA through that, they're all specifically for this meeting are linked under there. That's how I found them.
I, I just learned that last month, Austin, that the easy way to do it is, as you say, in the front page of the town website. If you go all the way down as a calendar, if you click on the date of our meeting, you, you get our meeting data and then you can click on, uh, materials and all the materials from this meeting will pop out.
Oh.
As opposed to going to that page which has all the, of all the old cases and everything else.
So, yeah, the Union Drive one where there was like forty-five documents for all scattered was a, was a good one, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Matt, I think that's a, it's a good idea, just to keep this consistency so I can search for it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, we'll do that. Okay, anything else to come up? Well, thank you, a long meeting tonight, thank you all very much.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
I'm done.